Not in the in the secondary system this morning. It pissed me off. They said it'd be there May fifteenth.
Well, that was yesterday.
I know. And I don't have it this morning. I got tomatoes. I planted eighty tomato plants.
Let me add a little cheese to your wine. I'm waiting for mine too.
Yeah, it ticks me off.
Not me. I used mine yesterday.
Oh, there you go. Of course, he's pumped it.
Mine's been up for two weeks.
No, that's pressure. That's right.
I've had it for two weeks.
Have you?
Yeah.
Right at a causing.
You're north of Ogden?
I'm in, yeah, Pleasant View.
Ogden, east Ogden.
Yeah, east Ogden, yeah.
I only noticed it was on because the neighbor's spigot was wide open. Water gushing everywhere. I don't know how long it even been gushing, but.
That happens.
It's not like April tenth or fifteenth like we're used to. So my calculations, if they're trying to save water, they just save twenty percent by the sheer number of the days that they turned it on like.
Oh, yeah. Plus, we've had great storms, so we haven't really needed it. But boy, it'd been nice to have this last week. Anyway, here we go. First item on their agenda, ZTA twenty twenty-one dash eleven. I don't know what that, what is that, Rick?
So we have this on your agenda tomorrow. Scott is doing the presentation, so Scott, why don't you explain?
Yeah, commissioners, in our current EDU accessory dwelling unit ordinance, we allow for ADUs up in the Ogden Valley if it's attached or integrated to the home architecturally. You don't have to have any transfer development rights. You don't have to have any additional dwelling unit rights. But if you want to have it detached in the backyard, you know, separate from the house, you do have to have a density right for that. Yeah, in the current ordinance, it allows for you to transfer densities, right? If that's something you'd like to do and you don't have the density to do it. But it only specifies that it needs to come from somewhere in the Ogden Valley planning area. So east of the mouth of the canyon. So naturally, people go looking for where's the cheapest, you know, you know, density right that I can transfer. And a lot of people are looking at the canyon and they're looking up an evergreen in areas that are not in the valley floor itself to transfer into the valley for the purposes of a detached ADU. That wasn't the intent of the ordinance. That wasn't what we had envisioned. We envisioned from valley floor going from green space where we want to keep it green and then into somebody's backyard to have a, an ADU. And so what this proposal is, is specifying where those density rights can come from. And I feel like on the second page of your staff report in front of you, our intention was to define the valley floor area, but not include the canyon in the sending area. So we had to specify, you know, specific zones where that could come from because we don't want to put in an overlay zone or we'd have to notify everybody of a zoning change. That's not what we're trying to do here. We're just trying to determine where these are appropriate to be sent from for this purpose. So.
Well, so that discussion, oh, that's John Lewis wants to do that today, right now.
His is a little bit different because it's not for ADUs. We're only talking about EDUs. He wants to do it for, yeah, transfer of density rights.
Still all right.
It is.
And it's the same thing. It's just for a different purpose, but it's the same thing.
Correct. Yep. So we're trying to define the valley floor.
So when we originally put this in, Gage reminded me here, I kind of thought we determined that everybody was allowed to have one auxiliary drilling on their own property without a right.
If it's attached.
Correct. It's got to be integrated architecture.
And basically, we made it fairly. I would say liberal in terms of attached, but so.
Yeah, and the roof of a garage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It has to be attached by a breezeway.
Breezeway.
Right, right. No more than what?
Fifteen. Fifteen.
Yeah, we've had that discussion.
Okay, that's right.
I think we said, look.
If you want to put down in the back corner, then you gotta have a.
A second right.
And, and I still, I still am okay with that because, I mean, basically, if they take a TDR and it saves them subdividing, they may, they may even have a legal, let's say they got a six and a half acre lot, they could probably subdivide. But some people would rather do that than subdivide. So give, it gives them an option. Plus, it gives an option to those that may not have a legal subdivision.
Right, right. Yep. Yep. So what we're saying is they can come from RE fifteen, RE twenty, AV three, FB three, and S one, which is pretty, pretty much defines what you see in green on that second page in your map with exception to the canyon. We don't want to be pulling density out of canyon.
And/or evergreen and some of those other areas like I talked about before.
Yep, yeah. So that's exactly what this proposal is doing. This is just a finding.
So, yeah, I mean, the concept here was what we discussed last week was take density, if we're going to make this work, take density off the valley floor, put it into the village areas and/or somebody wants to use it in their backyard for ADUs.
Exactly. So this is specific to ADUs right now. That's what this proposal will do. It just defines that sending area.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see a lot of difference here.
I kind of forgot that we had that these were detached.
I thought we'd already passed it.
We did, we did. We're just being a little bit more specific as to where these can come from.
Yeah. Okay, so the accessory drilling unit ordinance is in place. We're just, we're just being a little more clear on where you can transfer that density from.
Correct.
Sending from.
Yep.
We had someone that came in and applied for an ADU and they were transferring some evergreen down at the valley floor. And so that's when we're like timeout. That was not the intent of the ordinance.
Good.
The intent was to transfer from the valley floor to the valley floor.
I agree with that.
I'm, I'm, I'm right there, Mr. Chair. Oh, I am too. I mean, we wanted to limit density on, in the valley and it's always been intended to be that way.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with it.
And that's in conformity with our general plan.
Exactly. It is. Yep. So this is on your agenda tomorrow, public hearing as an ordinance. So if you have any other questions, happy answering for you, but it'll be.
I got one question.
Yeah.
Is that facial hair that started that?
A little bit. I'm getting a little scruffy, aren't I?
Yeah, it's got a kind of a red complexion and red hair. You can't.
I got sunburned over the weekend doing yard work.
I got a little of that too, but I don't red up like.
Coming in red.
Or Harvey isn't coming in at all.
Attaboy.
I just support the team.
Right.
All right. Okay. Any questions on this?
That was easy.
Well, hold on, before you're here, we got fifteen minutes, so let's have been around a little bit. The, uh, uh, I mean, this is ADUs and so I want to keep talking about this. This isn't specific to what I want to talk about, but now that we've, uh, we've allowed a cell to go through, uh, we need to come up with some receiving areas. And, uh, I'm not in a big rush to do this. But it's time. Don't you think, Charlie?
I do. Can we pull up a map? Um, I think we've got a general outline of sending and receiving that the general plan sets up.
Sure. You can reach it. You need the, you need the board?
Yeah. So are you saying, Mr. Chair, receiving areas other than village areas?
No, but we haven't officially tied this all up so it can happen today.
Well, I thought we had tied up receiving areas as village areas.
So we do say that village areas, village zones.
Village zones.
Not just village areas. There's village zones are receiving areas. We just, we gotta go out and rezone something to the village zone.
Yeah.
So it can exist.
Yeah, okay.
That's my point. And so, uh, it's actually, I mean, now that we've allowed the cell to take place, John's actually got TDRs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, you know, it's only going to be a little bit of time. He's going to want to come in here and transfer those. And if Wolf Creek's in there, then he's going to want to put higher density up there. And, you know, I mean, this creates a lot of stuff now, Gage.
Yeah. Well, I think that's why it's important for us to get through this village zone. Because in my mind, the only area that makes sense right now for receiving are the village, what I'm going to call the village area, village zones. Because that's, if, if we're going to put infrastructure up there that has any value, I'm talking about water and sewer and try to conserve water.
Right.
And make the best use of sewer, it has to be in areas where there's more people. So.
I agree with that.
That's why, that's why I think this village zone makes so much sense. Well, so that's where I'm at.
Are you gonna show us that, Charlie?
Yeah.
So why are your horses at that? I haven't eaten breakfast. I'm hungry.
Sounds like a hamper.
Yeah, we bought for him. It's all there.
Eat. Get a drink.
It'll be.
Portland.
Portland, you need to put a little white on. You can have two shirts.
You want me to share this out to Zoom?
I, yeah, because whatever.
There's that map, Sean, but we will go back one and pull up the open space map.
Yes.
Then minimize the window when that opens. Up there in the top. Oops. One more time.
There it is. Oh, there it is.
Smell good.
Yep.
Well, you know, I, I went on the GeoGizmo over the weekend. Mouse is so sensitive. Who do I check with on that? Somebody in Quinn's department?
Probably, yeah. It's the bane of my existence as well.
What kind of a mouse are you using?
The, the Apple one. That was almost impossible.
I've used one with a scroll wheel. I, I noticed the same thing.
What happens, Harvey?
Surface mice.
Yeah.
Too sensitive.
Yeah. When you go on to GeoGizmo, if you, if you don't have a scroll wheel, you have a touch sensitive mouse.
Yeah.
It blows up and in and out so much, it was almost impossible to navigate.
Yeah.
I was on it too. I had that same problem.
Yeah, it's a little sensitive.
We gotta get a, well, that technology, I think everybody's got a touch sensor. Most people do.
Yeah.
The scroll wheel can go slower. It doesn't have to go nine thousand miles an hour.
Right. Uh, so the two from the bottom, valley open lands map. So gentlemen, how this, how this map was made is we essentially identified all of the uh, open lands on the, uh, in the Ogden Valley. I just sound about it for the Ogden Valley. And we categorized the open lands by different categories. So, for example, we've got agriculture and open lands. We've got O one, um, open space. So that's O one zone. We got third party conservation easements, development agreement, open space, and cluster subdivision, open spaces. Those are the layers that you see on the map and, and some variety of green or brownish. Okay. And so, um, when we look at the agricultural and open lands, that's the, the green color that's on the valley floor, kind of checkered across the valley floor, the darker green.
So is that current ag use?
Or, or just technically, it's any parcel greater than ten acres that's being taxed at.
Ag, okay.
So say that again. I didn't understand.
So all these little green parcels that are checkered on the valley floor.
Yeah.
Those are parcels that are at least ten acres that are being taxed in green.
So that's green belt.
Also, that's green.
There's a lot of green belt up there.
So if we use just.
Why would you say at least ten acres? Green belt's five.
Right. We just were looking at big open spaces. If we wanted to do five, we do five. But we.
It's probably a fairly similar, right?
I think so. I think we might see it fill in just a little bit more, but. Yeah. So if we just took this map alone uh, and, uh, and adopted it as our sending area map, and then all the white spaces in between is the receiving area.
So if you just took what area alone?
If we took the green area on the valley.
Right, 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 right.
And made that our sending area and all the white spaces in between are receiving area, just on the valley floor. There's our sending and receiving. Now, it doesn't have to be that simple. We can go in and surgically, uh, change those lines to meet our needs. But we have a base, a baseline to work with that we adopted in two twenty sixteen. And then obviously, the villages is the area of most importance that we want to see things transferred to.
Well, if you look, if you look right here from the elementary school. And Nordic Steve Resort. That's kind of the area.
That's right.
I wanted to do the sewer right there.
Right there.
Yeah, that's fine. Makes sense to me.
Where are you looking, Scott?
This big green right here.
Yeah, elementary is here, so it'd be right about there.
Yeah.
Right about where Nordic Valley is, right here. That was kind of the area.
Yeah, that's kind of your.
And then you can grow from there.
That's kind of your mile and a half, whatever it's rated.
Right.
Yeah. And some of those green areas in between, that circle that you just, uh, outlined, um, Scott, is being developed. For example, this one right here. That's a Osprey.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, you might, if you're drawing a circle around it, you might have a couple of little bits of pieces that we can clip out and say that's your receiving area. And all the other green area is your sending area.
Corfla Osprey. They know what they want, so they want to send. They don't want to receive, right?
They're not going to develop to their full potential.
Right.
Have large. Yeah, it's.
They're not going to send developed to their full potential.
Yeah. So we leave a green in that case.
Yeah, I think so.
So we can, my suggestion is that we start with the map very similar to this. I'll make, I'll be making some minor adjustments, but very similar to this to say these are ascending and receiving. Anyone who wants to be or in ascending or receiving or change the map in, in some other way can go through an overlay zone process, change it. But I would suggest we get through the process, we create a TDR overlay ordinance, and this is the map that we use. Um, so.
Now we're getting the water and the sewer study done up there. It, uh, would be a good time to introduce this with it and kind of put a bow around that whole package.
Yep. Yeah, I agree.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Has anybody put a boundary around where you're talking yet?
No, no, no. And even the boundary I was plotting was simply a circle on a map. It was nothing.
In nothing formalized.
Yeah, I didn't go down a street or anything like that. It was generally, well, five of the seven receiving areas, the village areas, were in there. And that's kind of how I started that.
Okay. Okay.
So it was those and everything in between.
Okay.
The only reason I went to the elementary because we'd like to get that on sewer.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, that's fairly close to the dam and I suspect that's a big contributor.
Yeah, we may even want to go down to the church house. That's just a little bit further down.
Yeah.
Just as a big community gathering space.
Where's that?
Uh, just a little bit down from the elementary.
Just across the street and down. Yeah, where that church is.
Yeah.
And I'm okay with that. Doesn't matter to me.
Commissioner, when you said five, were you thinking of going to Liberty? Or were you thinking of Nordic, Old Town, New Town, and?
Nordic, Old Town, New Town, Wolf Creek. But there was one more in there. Liberty. Or is it?
No, that's the other, that's the other.
We had Liberty and then we had on the south side.
Oh, there were three on the south. I thought there were only two on the south.
So you're thinking four, there's four.
Yeah. Well, sure, we're gonna take those four. There's nothing, there's nothing sacred about not going to Liberty or going to Liberty. I didn't think they were going to put up to Liberty. I. Yeah. I didn't think the backbone went that far.
It's a matter of cost. I don't want to get that far.
Just a matter of cost.
I just wanted to get clarification. So you're thinking four then?
Yeah, I've said five, but you're.
I would say that the, really, the maverick, the four-way stop right there, that'd be the center line and we work our way away from that in both directions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Well, we all kind of see this the same way.
Now, one of the other things that our general plan recommends is in the sending areas, if a landowner chooses not to send, that they should only be allowed to do one development type, and that's clustered, smaller lots with open spaces. And up here, it's not required to do agriculture open space. It's just natural open space is what, uh, the code allows for, for the clusters up in the valley. But I'm, whatever you guys choose to do.
When you say up here, you're talking about in the valley.
Valley.
So say that again.
Of the valley floor. So, uh, if you go back to the, uh, previous map, Sean.
Sorry.
In the green areas on the valley floor, it's suggesting, so I'll let you pull that up.
So it can be careful.
The general plan says that the only development type that should be allowed there are master plan developments and cluster.
In the greens.
In the green. Instead of traditional one unit every three acres kind of.
Oh. We actually agree with that because that's where we want to condense it to.
Yeah, I, you're not talking about cutting back density. You're just saying cluster.
You can still do all the same amount. You just, yeah, you just cluster it. And what that also allows is.
I don't disagree with that. You can save some farm ground.
Yeah, all I wasn't sure we wanted to go into here. We gotta have this separate and that separate. I don't know. I don't really care.
We can't afford that right now.
Well, we don't. We don't know if we can afford it or not.
Most of what you're looking right here is, is in, under conservation right now.
That's monastery.
Yeah, so we're just talking about a little bit over in here.
Right.
Like they just have.
Well, so, yeah, that's not going to happen anytime soon. But so Bill White, I know, was getting ready to pull the trigger on his.
Yes.
Deal up there. How many, has he proposed anything on his remaining piece that's not in the conservation?
No, he, we, we talked to him just a little bit about it, but he hasn't formally proposed anything.
And I, did he talk to you, Sean? I know.
Even Rick and Stan have been working with.
I've had a conversation with Stan.
Yeah. And just on that side note, um, guy with Bill White on Friday, and he needed to be a little more clarification on his land use.
Right.
Plan. So he's making some revisions and he's getting. We'll get that issue.
Okay. Bill White, that D L W R White guy?
No, son of his.
No.
I think it was Bill White.
Bill White's the guy that bought the monastery from the market.
Oh, okay.
And then he put, what, uh, half of that into conservation easement.
I think it was more than that. I think it was most of it.
Anyway.
It was a big chunk, I remember.
Well, remember, we, we contributed fifty thousand out of our share.
Right.
Of, um, funds.
Yep.
To help to go on with, they raised three hundred thousand.
Three hundred, yes.
So they helped, because that was a nine, nine million dollar conservation purchase.
Right.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a worthwhile thing to, to document, but the county has helped in a quote, purchase of development rights. Um, deal. That's essentially what this is.
I hope the people in the valley, uh, really remember that. You know, we are minded. We've actually put finances, all county finances towards that to help protect that. We are looking in that direction where the, especially when these opportunities present itself. That was a big commitment.
Yeah.
And, but it sure seems like that never, not a lot of people ever want to talk about that.
No, they don't want to talk about.
They don't want to remember it.
Well, that took a lot of density off that portion of the valley.
It did.
Um, and especially, I mean, it benefited a lot just from traffic, water use. And again, you know, we get blamed for over dense, but we never get any credit for that type of use. Where we've actually taken, taken how many?
There was a few hundred that we.
We probably took five or six hundred units off of the valley floor right there.
Yeah.
So I say help do that.
Charlie, we don't even need to document that because if somebody wants to receive it, there just won't be anything to say.
Yep, nothing there.
No, they wiped them out with the nine hundred bucks.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to make sure how that was accounted for.
But we would like to account for that, subtracting it from that ten thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
We should. You're right. So something to take notice on that, it's a conservation easement that a third party owns. We don't have any control.
Right.
Right. So if, for some reason, all entities that are involved in that decides to undo the conservation easement, uh, you know, then they potentially could have some rights to transfer. I just don't see that happening. It's going to be very hard for it to happen, especially where Bill got a, a good tax kickback on.
Yeah.
On retiring all those units. And so I.
I don't see that happening.
I don't see it happening either. And that's one of the reasons why we put all the conservation easements on this map as well as, even if they were third party, we'd still think that, you know, it's, it's worthwhile to consider them as essentially retired. To really lock it down. Uh, we should probably go in and just rezone it to the O one zone. That way, if anything did get undone on any of these properties.
Yeah.
It, it would be wiped out.
What is it now?
Uh, most of it is, uh, FB three. I think they might have a tiny bit in AD three. And then they have some in the, uh, F five and F four.
Bill, that's not a bad idea.
Four, forest valley, three acres.
He had, uh, didn't he have a little land up there that he was planning on developing?
He kept like the center of the monastery with the barns and he kept some of that. From what he told me, he wants to put his own home up there, maybe three or four others, but.
That's why I said it.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that conversation with Bill to say, let's, if that's the true intent, he shouldn't have any issues with taking it to O one.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think so.
Anything else, commissioners?
I think not. Yeah, I just wanted to have that conversation about where we were going to go. What do we knew, while there is one thing, what do we actually have to do now? Cause to flip the switch on both ends, say it's active, go.
Need to finish writing the ordinance, the overlay ordinance itself, TDR overlay ordinance, get it through the planning commission at a public hearing and they get in front of you guys for final adoption at public hearing. And so we're talking, if we can get something in front of the planning commission mid-June, which is my plan, we could be in front of you guys in July with, uh, an ordinance to adopt.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say, is this, have you had this before the planning commission?
This map right here is in the general plan. This is what they adopted as part of.
But have you had the discussion as far as, just what we did as far as sending, receiving, village?
We did. We're gonna have to brush up with them again. It's been about six months since we had.
I, I would like to make sure that we get them to weigh in on whether they still think.
Yeah, we want them to send it to us.
Yes.
Yeah. Planters. Yeah. Do it good. All right. Well, I think we've done then with you guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's make sure that meeting, we talked about that as a public.
Oh, yeah, more welcome.
Okay.
So when you come in here, two, twelve and one, we expect you to participate.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie and commissioners.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Well, we're well on our way, Gage.
No, this is good.
Yeah.
It's taken a while, but.
It is.
You don't want to rush into stuff like this.
We're finally heading our way. Scott Park and Jason Horn on the Pete Card.
Yeah, I don't want to clock. Yeah, one more minute.
So, uh, Commissioner, uh, Harvey, just so you know, we had our LMSA meeting earlier.
We did.
Awesome.
Yeah, you two sit on that.
Well, we were notified.
By? We're notified by?
By Brian Moss that he's resigning, uh, at the end of this week.
Is Brian Moss a member of the LMSA?
He is.
And he works out at the Western Z.
So this is our opportunity to put somebody else on that and take control of that board, which we've been wanting to do. So this timing on this is dang good, actually. And we were also told.
Gentlemen.
That, uh, Kent Bradford, who's now the president, he, uh, he wants, uh, to get off in about eight or 10 months.
Well, he's retiring.
Yeah, he's resigned. And, uh, Western Zirconian wants to have less of a footprint there. They, they kind of want their guys off.
Really?
Hello?
Okay.
So we'll have a chance to get a fourth seat. You know, sometime around the end of the year. That's really good timing.
Well, this is, uh, this has, this is, it sounds fortuitous.
It is.
Fortuitous.
And things come to those that wait.
Yeah.
Do we have any, do we have any new eligible members out there that?
Well, I have to give it a little thought.
Yeah, I'm sure we'd come up, people would be willing to serve on that.
But you know, uh, the next moves out there are pretty big moves. You know, I mean, if they end up with ten or twelve million dollars and then, uh, they'll be, uh, looking for a loan out of that state loan fund. We brought up the fact that this, uh, Watson subdivision, you know, they announced that, that the purchase is complete, so.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, I got that. I got that email over the weekend.
Well, the one I said that was under contract. I don't, did it say they closed it?
Yeah, I got one that said they closed it. Anyway, so in my mind, I, I made the comment today that we should consider taking LMSA to the river and going east. But you can hear the wind sucking on the other end, couldn't you, Gage?
They didn't like that too much. Well, they're good. And, and in their, but to their benefit, they're concerned about capacity because obviously that would.
That changed the whole.
That would change. And I said, look, I know that, uh, that Marriott has talked about his own pond system out there, so between the two, we, I think we can come up with a solution out there.
I agree.
Well, we just need extra dirt. We got plenty of dirt out there.
Oh, I've been to move it, Harvey.
That's, uh, that's great.
That is great.
All right. Aware of that. I appreciate you sharing that.
Yeah.
For Mr. Chair, before you start.
Uh huh.
Let me just take a second and get this distraction out of my. It's like walking his back to Stacy.
I thought he was going to hand me a check.
Yeah.
I thought it was a payday.
Just not.
It's pretty tight with those checks, I think.
Yeah.
It's for paper checks he was signing, right?
Paper checks.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Still, Jason?
They still do the same thing.
Is sore to start to go way down?
You know, I actually haven't been sore at all, it was more mentally than anything.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, the fact that I had to walk a fair amount of that marathon, I wasn't, I wasn't sore.
Didn't beat you up too bad. You doing the audit?
I don't know, I was gonna talk to Sarah, however, see if they're still in spot.
They're filled, they're full, but you might get in. Sean's doing it.
I'm doing the half.
Sean.
Yeah, but.
Me, John Bond, and who else, there's four of us.
And, uh, Chris Crockett.
Chris Crockett?
No, we're all just.
And I think Commissioner Harvey's about that close to signing up. Got to get him his bid.
Yeah, there you go. Couple more of these chips.
This has nothing to do with what we're here for, but Ricky asked me to hand them to you. He was particularly fond of the how we're doing chart, if you just open up that first flap and look at that, he likes that.
Wow.
I know, I just, I had to do it, I just. I know, I just had to, I had to do it.
Wow.
Is this a new, uh, flyer?
Yeah, it comes out, we do it every year. I mean, it matches the format of the previous ones, because accounts aren't very, you know, creative and changing, we just give you the same updated.
Wow, that is really good.
I like it.
All right.
Wait, hold on, pay attention to the second one.
Yeah.
We're glad you did this.
So, this is one o'clock, we're, uh, this is our discussion on P cards, Scott Park and Jason Horn. So, Scott, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so, um, this is slightly outside of scope, but Ricky asked me to hand this to you, it's just, uh, updated report. Our auditors haven't finally signed off yet, we're still waiting for them to give us the final opinion.
You bet.
But I don't anticipate any changes. So, the, the one Ricky liked a lot was the bond of debt per capita.
That's a good one.
Three hundred and forty-nine dollars per citizen to a hundred and seventy-six dollars from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, that's.
That's big.
Yeah, I mean, there's a little bit of population growth in there, but that's primarily paying off debt.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, anyway.
Hold on, bond of debt, where was that then, bud?
Uh, right here, so if you fold that flap back in, it's right there.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Oh, right there at the bottom, yeah.
Yep.
Bond of debt.
So, that's, that's basically you guys paying off debt early, and then, I mean, a small factor is growth in the population, but that's primarily debt being paid off. So, Ricky wanted me to show you that?
That's good, you guys.
Thirty-seven million in the rainy day fund.
Yep.
Hey, Gage, we've cut that debt in half.
Cut it in half, so what was the rainy day fund in two thousand seventeen?
In two thousand seventeen, we were about sixteen million.
Sixteen, that's what I thought, okay.
I, I confirmed that, but that's rough.
That's, that was a number I had in mind.
Yep. So.
So, it was more than double that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and when you say rainy day fund, then that's money that's, uh, capital.
No, that's general fund, unassigned fund balance.
That's money we have expanded.
Because that's rainy day can be used for anything, capital projects, we're saving towards specific projects, so we have to identify those, and we're saving towards those, so that's not, that's not unrestricted.
This is great.
Yeah. So, all right, okay, second quick issue is just a follow-up from, uh, last time, we had talked about, um, this building isn't an R D A, a hundred percent goes. Uh, the tax increment goes to Ogden City. The, um, vacant lot across, yeah, vacant lot across from the temple is in the same R D A, a hundred percent goes to Ogden City.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, Market Star is not in an R D A.
Okay.
So, that Market Star building is free.
Could you work some magic there, Gage, and do some transfer or something?
Yeah, we might want to have to talk, so a hundred percent's already going to Ogden City on that R D A.
Of, of any increment, yeah.
For North Temple.
Yes, if there's any, there's, there's really not much that's going there, because there hasn't been much development in this that's taxable.
The clock's already started on that.
Correct, it expires twenty thirty-two.
So, the clock's already started.
So, we would have some control if we went back in and said we want to revise the T I F on that. In terms of percent, in terms of maybe directing that certain.
Yeah.
Like into a parking terrace.
And there's only, Gage, there's only ten years left on.
Yeah, the ten years is a big thing.
And it was an actual.
Eric, was there a cap?
I actually didn't see a cap, we hadn't been putting caps on, and this was actually a U R A, so one of the iterations of R D As.
Yeah.
Um, and I forget all the requirements now, but I didn't check to see if there's a cap.
Yeah, and I, if I was Ogden, I wouldn't allow you to redo that.
Well, you might if, uh.
Yeah.
We extended the timeframe.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
Extended the timeframe.
That's what I'm thinking. We went to fifteen or twenty years.
Well, and if you took, if you had the Lloyd over there to offer to build a new building.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Well, I think the combination, because if.
Hey, yeah, yeah, that's true, I'm not thinking right all that.
You got a hundred percent of nothing for a long time.
Yeah, a hundred percent of nothing.
You know, a hundred percent of nothing for the next three or four years, I mean, Harv, you're not, you're down to probably five or six years.
Yeah.
Before anything really starts kicking in.
Yeah.
If they started.
Yeah, that's it.
A S A P.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good information, Scott.
All right, sorry, Jason and Matt, I diverted you.
No, I'm good.
All right, so, purchase cards. So, right now, our vendor for purchase cards is U S Bank, we've used them for as long as I've been here, and probably a lot longer. They haven't updated their website in as long as I've been here, and probably a lot longer. Uh, they, so our, our P card process is very, very old school, like, the nineteen nineties, maybe even worse than that, so it's basically paper. I mean, you guys do it, you go swipe your P cards, somebody prints off a physical statement, they go and they staple receipts, or they print an email and attach it, staple it, review it, sign off and, on a hard copy. Um, and this is what Shelley and all those guys are doing for you.
Yeah.
Everybody else is doing this, the library, they have people that are dedicated, their job is to manage these P card transactions, a good share of what they're doing is going through, looking at all the paper receipts, making sure they match, signing off. Then we hand them to Sean or to whoever, and he flips through them and reviews them, and then he signs off on them, piece of paper.
Really works good, doesn't it?
In the nineties, it did. Um, and then, whenever I have an auditor who calls and asks me, uh, for a, a transaction, then I call Sean, and I say, hey, Sean, I need you to go find through your boxes and, and find these seven transactions across these seven purchase cards, and please tell me they're all in the box somewhere. And so, then he has to have somebody go and actually pull physical pieces of paper, put them in a folder, then ship them up to me, and we hand them to our auditors, and then we ship them back down, and, and that happens several different times, so. There is a better way, it was invented back in the early.
I'd say.
Electronic transactions.
Yeah.
Back when Moby Dick was a minnow, is what I'm saying.
So.
Not that far back.
Not, not quite that far back, so. We talked to Wells Fargo, we talked to Zions Bank, they both use the same core system, which is created by Visa. Visa does a purchasing card system, they have an app on your phone, and what you basically do, Jason has complete control over those P cards, let's say I have a P card, I go to Home Depot. I swipe my P card, it's over the limit, or it, it errors out, I can put my phone and say, oh, this is exactly why, and I can have Jason fix it, then I swipe my card again, it works. I get a piece of paper that's a receipt, I take a picture of it on my app, that image is already now attached to the transaction, and I can throw the receipt away, or I can put it in my pocket and lose it. Sean, if it's over a certain dollar amount, gets a notification, right, right then, if it's over five thousand dollars, or whatever, we, we set that amount at. Sean pulls up on his online statement, instead of having to flip through all these paper copies where people had to print and scan or tape and copy, he just pulls up the transactions, he clicks on the thing, the image pops up. He says yes or no, and then he moves to the next transaction. Whenever there's an audit that comes in, I just log into the, and I say, what were the transactions you wanted again, okay, click, 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 here's the images, here's how they were coded. It has intelligent coding, so it knows that if it's an airline, it's already gonna code it to our travel and training, if it's meals and entertainment, if it's a restaurant, it's gonna code it to those, it'll default that coding in there for you. So, and the nice thing, you say, well, how much does a system like this cost, and is, they pay us, they pay us a rebate on our transactions, now, U S Bank is currently paying us a rebate. And they are slightly higher, uh, than what we would be getting from them, so we'd probably be getting about twenty-five-ish thousand dollars a year based off of our volumes, and U S Bank's paying us thirty, thirty-two-ish, so there is a little bit of, uh, decrease in our revenue. But the cost of all the time and effort in terms of paper and, and auditing and lost transactions and things of that nature, I think. Moving to these systems, it's no additional cost to the county, it's just a little bit of less revenue coming in, it's well worth that in terms of benefit to the county and modernizing our P card system. Um, and so, what we would like to do, we went out, we looked at U S Bank, excuse me, we looked at, yeah, U S Bank, Wells Fargo and Zions, U S Bank hasn't updated anything and don't have anything.
And we talked to them, and they, they really didn't have anything to offer us either, so.
Yeah.
Giants, U S Bank.
We just went back to them, and we already had some ideas and things that we were looking for, and they just don't, they're not really interested in doing anything new.
So, at, at our current projected rate, Zions will pay us back a slightly higher rebate, if we double our volume, then Wells Fargo would start, would cross the line and start paying us slightly higher, but neither one of them is, is enough to make any difference. I think we like the Zions system better, and the reason why is because Wells Fargo takes Visa's program and then adds their custom programming to it, when we talk to one of their references, every time Visa doesn't update, it, it can break the Wells Fargo system. And so, because they have to go and adjust their coding to match what Visa adjusted on there, whereas Zions Bank is actually just a reseller of the Visa software, so this is developed by Visa, it's used by thousands and thousands of different users. And so, we think that one would be a better option for the county, so we wanted to present this to you to see if you are okay with us pursuing this, what we would like to do at this point is go grab a P card user from the library, from the sheriff's office, from Sean's group. You know, and, and maybe one other place, and just show them this system, make sure that they're on board with that, and then if you're okay with it, we'd like to move forward, we're, we're okay with our procurement rules and everything like that, we already have businesses with these existing vendors. And under the banking service, I didn't think we would have, have had to do what we did already, we could have just picked one. Um, but we wanted to go through and compare and make sure we were getting the best value for it, so we'd like to move forward with that, and then eventually roll this out to, to modernize the whole P card process in the county.
Wow, well, like a little ask, here's a.
It's a great ask, I'm fully supportive of it, Mr. Chair.
No, when can you do it?
It's gonna take, it's gonna take some time.
Yeah.
And we would have them help us do the rollout, um, transition into the new, the new system, but I mean, the streamlining, the efficiency, little result from this are, are pretty big.
Yeah.
The system we're currently on is, is very tight, I mean, some of the examples that Scott talked about of changes that matter, I have to make, that's a forty-five minute to a two-hour phone call with U S Bank, which is ridiculous.
Wow, really?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty long, I mean, I, I don't say that and exaggerate, that's, that's exactly what it is, so. I had to track down one where it was just a name change, we had someone in the county get married, and it took me forty-five minutes on the phone just to get to someone, and then the name change was four or five weeks later, so.
Wow.
Yeah, Scott and I have talked about this back and forth, off and on, and we finally just decided to start meeting and doing research, so we've spent a significant amount of time with companies, and we've spent a, a fair amount of time just. Sharing notes to see what would be best for the employees of the county, and this is, this is a good move, I think.
Yeah, it's about a three or four month implementation, so if you, if we had signed the contract today, it would be three or four months before we added it in place.
Yeah.
I like the fact that all of those sides, because they're local.
The, one of the.
Yeah, I like.
We kind of like that too, that wasn't the, the reason, but we do like that as well.
Well, and the feedback from one of us, you know, whenever we have a question, we call up, and actually somebody, a human answers the phone, they have a team in Salt Lake.
We like having a direct line.
They have representatives here that can visit.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, yeah. Sounds like a good efficiency program to me.
That's what we're shooting for.
I think so, yeah, and we're hoping to get this up, I mean, with your permission, we, we're, we're gonna roll it out to everybody, make sure all the departments are on board, we want to make sure we have buyout.
So, your thumbs up, Greg, or, uh, Gage, right?
Oh, yeah.
Love you, all right, okay.
As far as I'm concerned, get it done by the end of the week.
Listen, I've wanted to do this since six years ago, this was.
Yeah.
Super, been super hard, as an employee, having to do that myself, that's been very cumbersome, and they give you about this much time before they lock you out as an employee. You know, you gotta be, this is gonna be so much better.
Yeah, this is good.
Okay.
My only question is, why wasn't this done before? Is there a reason that we stuck with U S Bank, or?
I can't speak for before my.
Because I mean, this is not new technology.
No, it's not.
No, I can't speak for before my time, but while I've been here, there have just been other things that I, bigger fish to fry, and we finally are at a point where it makes sense to move forward.
Well, and, and truthfully, we started our, our accounting system and our apparel system were both way antiquated, we moved to Munis, we've, we've been, uh, hitting our big systems and we're modernizing them. So, this is just the next one on the list, and after we get this one, I'm actually gonna come back to you on another one, that's our financial reporting and budgeting modules, but that's.
Good, all right, guys.
Appreciate what you're doing.
That's great, for sure.
Go tear into it.
I need to insert one more thing, since he was able to insert two things at the beginning and take time.
There we go.
Hey, I'm getting ready to release the R F P for the O E C C remodel, they've, they've been budgeted five point eight million for that project, which will be disclosed.
Right.
It sounds like there's the potential to get an additional one to two million. Can I let them know that there's the potential, if they want to let us know what additional services can be added?
Where are you gonna get that from?
The three of you, and this guy.
Wow, three.
We save another million?
Yeah, I don't remember committing another million.
We didn't commit to it, but what we said is, is that this is gonna take three or four years to do, and in that meantime, with the amount of money you're budgeting to capital projects, agriculture parks, and wreck, that they may have another million or two in the next three or four years if they could dedicate to this as well.
Well, so, what are you doing for this, the scope of work?
So, the scope.
How could you say you're putting in the five point eight, but?
So, the scope of work basically says that we're budgeted for five point eight, we want to know the services, the updates, everything that you can bring up to that amount, so this is basically going to be best value. Five point eight, show us everything we can, but then I wanted to put something in there without disclosing the actual amount. That says, and by the way, we're thinking we're going to have some additional funds for this project, so tell us what else you can do, because there might be something on that list that is very appealing. Or something that we really want to spring for, which means Marty would want to come in and say, can we please have that money, because this update's pretty.
I'm okay with that, actually.
I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, I, how I would put it is, look, there might be some potential adds, so, if, if it was to go over five point eight, what could we do for additional adds?
Yeah, yep.
They do that in bid, you say, tell us what you could do, if you were to add the next step, what would it be, how much?
And I'm asking on behalf of Marty as well, so, I'll let him know.
Yeah, and then we can make the decision whether we got.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ten dollars.
Sounds like you got our okay on that too.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, it does say not guaranteed, but we do want to know what else is out there.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Hey, Jason.
Okay.
Good job.
Need anything from us?
Really good job, thank you. You guys are doing great.
Keep carrying it up.
Keep it up. Appreciate it.
Sean, you staying all day?
No, finished my lunch, I'm heading out, I wanted to stay, I wanted to hear this discussion, I was in the one o four, so.
See you guys.
Hey, great job, that makes me super happy.
Figured you'd be happy about that, I've heard your voice.
The P card?
Your opinion on that a couple times.
We'll make it right. We've done everything we can to help the U S Bank, if they choose to be antiquated and still use a stone and a chisel, I know pretty soon we've got to move on, gotta move on. Yeah, I don't have any.
Yeah. You can actually pop off and, right.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
So, we got about.
Used to dip in minus to me.
Yeah. We got about.
At the end, yeah.
We got about a five-minute break here, if you want to hit the restroom or do anything.
No, I think I'm okay.
What do you think about this?
Think about it.
It's good, I'm proud, I love the report, I love.
Everything on there is positive.
You know, it's slow coming, but what, you know, you guys talk about going back to seventeen, but around fifteen, the Meister, they were, we were gonna be bankrupt in that, we didn't have a rainy day fund.
No.
They've sped that down to zero.
Yeah, it was, you were that close to closing the door, yeah.
It's good management, Harv. You guys have taught a lot.
Happy day.
Well, happy day.
What do you say, we got five minutes?
Hey, I got all that paraphernalia on the side of my house, thank you.
Did you get it, did you see it there? Good, appreciate that.
I'm gonna talk to deep pitch down there, so everybody coming out of you.
Oh. Yeah, I could, you, could you handle that?
I got, listen, I got all those, I got it all, don't you, look, don't worry about a thing.
I got, listen, I got all those, I got it all. Don't you, look, don't worry about a thing. Don't worry about it.
It's in your hands. It's in your capable hands. How is old deep pitch doing?
He's okay. He seems to be a I think he's working on some big things. I think that hotel out late has done him really well.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
In fact, I heard, I I heard that he was gonna build a third one.
Well, I think both these hotels are doing pretty well, aren't they? Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for lunch.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
See you later.
New procedures for a significant BOE adjustments.
Board of Equalization.
So what adjustments?
I don't know. Board of Equalization.
Or new procedures, I should say. I'm not sure we have a lot of capacity to change procedure. Maybe internally we do. I don't know. Kinda set by the state.
This new peak guard, Gage, this new peak guard would be a uh, be good for arts. It'll save us hu- hundreds, maybe a thousand, thousand hours
Oh, yeah.
Staff time. Uh, just, it's been ridiculous.
I didn't realize it, I mean, you know.
Why?
But I didn't realize it was that much uh, hands on paperwork.
Oh.
I would say Stacy a lot of time. Tracking all our
Go to little different P cards. It's all digital. You take a picture of the receipt. It's all done. It's all stored. It's all done. Hated. Probably not gonna have a lot to do from here on out. I'm sorry.
I think we'll keep
The tissues are over there, a little, one more cabinet over. You need to die.
Dry my tears.
Yeah.
Dry those tears.
So they are changing it or they're considering it?
No, we're gonna do it. Gage, did you hear that?
Three to four months, but.
Did you hear that there's some exposed sandbars out there at Willer? The water's so low.
Really?
I'm going out today.
Yeah, she's gonna tell you.
Well, when I drove by it the other day, it looked like it was pretty full.
Yeah, I think it's filling back up. Listen. Didn't you see this? I'm going like this the whole time. It's not because I got something in my eye. I had heard something. Oh, Gage, you might have lost my vote today.
I know.
We see who that's from.
Jay Thompson?
Yeah, that's John Thompson.
Oh.
Major. I thought he was a captain. He was a major.
Wow. His handwriting is a little
Yeah, a little tough, isn't it? You see? You wrote me a little note.
That was nice of him. He's a nice guy.
He is a nice guy. Anyway.
That's good.
Yeah.
Take the tender rights you know. That's great.
This one?
Yeah.
About this one? Did you give me that one?
I gave you that too to look at. They're gonna put a new radar tower out there.
Where's that?
Uh. You know where the uh, concrete recycling place is, the the two thousand West and twelfth, right there?
Yeah.
Right there along the river.
Oh.
They just sent us a little notice.
Who's doing that?
Who is that?
Jamie Cochran Smith, archaeologist, historian.
Rest home.
How come they, boy, they're they're not, they don't keep their contacts for, hey, John?
Gentlemen.
There he is, right there.
Hey, how's it going?
Well, how are you guys?
Good. How are you guys?
Not too bad for Monday.
Look at it.
Please sit down and have, grab a little deal there.
Oh.
That's interesting. We just
I got a cold over the weekend, so in favor of trying to keep you guys out there. I've been wearing a mask.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, uh, it's one thirty and uh, we've had uh, John Ullary and Dee Dee Kimber come in.
April Hatfield.
April Hatfield. Where's Dee Dee?
And she, she's working. We're gonna close our role in a week.
Okay, April Hatfield, then I'm sorry. Very good. So who's gonna take this over?
I am.
Go ahead, dude.
Oh, this is the annual meeting of the surplus.
Surplus, no, Board of Equalization.
That's what I'm
Right, Board of Equalization. We've uh, recently been going through code, found that we need to start listing what they call what's the word? Significant adjustments as separate agenda items on the BOE agenda.
Really? What's a significant adjustment?
An adjustment. Anything more than twenty percent of the value and a million dollars. And I've got a list.
Anything more than forty percent of the value.
And a million dollars.
And a million.
So it has to cover both.
That's covered both, yes. So this really stemmed from
Worried about.
Uh, that, a few years ago, Rio Tinto filed an appeal on their stadium and they provided their
I worried about.
They provided the, Sally Kenny Sessors Office some information, uh, and they, they made a fairly significant drop in their assessment value. And so they they poured, they put it through uh, the board, just like everything else. And then Sandy City, uh, when they realized that there, it was like a twenty million dollar adjustment. They said, wait a minute. And they, so they got on, saw like uh, county council and the county council said, well, we didn't approve that. And the county assessor said, well, yeah, you did. You did approve it. And so, and then they said, well, we weren't aware. So the legislature's uh, solution was is now the Board of Equalization has to notify the legislative body in case you uh, if there's a significant adjustment, which is a million dollars or twen- and twenty percent.
So when you say is that an adjustment, is that either up or down or just down?
I
Cause all these are down.
It just says adjustment. It doesn't specify, but I, it would be both.
It'd be both.
Yeah.
But these just so happen to all be down.
These are all down.
Yes.
So these are adjustments that people have come to you with. And they've requested that we adjust that. We think the taxes are too high. And the uh, they've looked at them and agreed.
Yeah, they're a little too high.
Yeah. Well.
So are these adjustments you've actually made now?
Correct.
Those were for twenty twenty-one, in the twenty twenty-one appeal season, yes.
Okay, so we just have to advertise.
So why?
Yes.
Why is Weaver County a hundred percent?
Well, that was a that was a description error. It was, I think we had it listed at three hundred ninety acres and it's actually point zero one acres. Oh, so, okay.
Never mind.
But it, but that doesn't have any effect on
It was exempt.
Right, and it's exempt.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
So Weed Ridge, Wedridge LLC, where's that at?
That is the hotel.
What? It's a hotel off Twenty First Street. So is it the west, is it a western?
Oh, that's uh
It's a Holiday Inn Comfort Suite.
Okay, thank you.
Where is it?
It's right off the Twenty First Street exit.
That's Clay and Wyman and Berry Elders.
Oh, is that Eldridge?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we got off uh, five million bucks, huh?
Yeah, well, we asked for their information and they didn't provide it to us before the world closed. And then and we sent out the the notices, then they said, okay.
Wasn't Valley Ranch, Harv? I don't know about that one.
Landing at five points.
See, landing at five points, I believe was uh, oh. So section forty-two housing, that's low income housing, like tech properties.
Right.
If they uh, we're obligated by state law to value their property on your, their actual income. And since they're section forty-two, they have a reduced income. If they don't provide us the information, we do our best.
Right.
And then in this case, they
So once again, we did have the information, so we had, we did a best guess.
Exactly.
Pleasant Valley Ranch. I've heard of that. Where's that?
That's me.
That's Harv. That's, it's just, it's
Good.
Washington Terrace. And and that we use the actual um
Sales data.
Sell, sell information.
Sure.
What's the four fifty-five twenty-fifth?
That's a reception center. So it's just the one right off uh, over here on Twenty Fifth Street.
Is that the Monarch?
Yes.
That's the Monarch.
That's Monarch.
I would have thought that that would have increased from the year before.
Well, we had, we had a data error.
How come? So it went from three three billion, six fifty to two sixty-eight?
Okay, so
What's up with that?
That's excellent question. So there, a couple, there, there are a couple issues uh, with with the property. Uh, our data was incorrect.
Okay.
So in one portion, we had it as um finished area. The tenant improvements were all complete.
Okay.
Uh, the TIs weren't done. It's just a show. There's another section of parking lot. For some reason, we had that picked up as building area. And so clearly, it's not. So somebody made a mistake.
Okay. So you think the two sixty-eight is correct, then?
Well, we're valuing the, all those parcels together as an economic unit.
Okay.
And and one of the parcels, it's not on here, is parcel one. It's, the value is adjusted up, actually.
Okay, as I say, if anything
Oh, that's the thing. You don't see those.
Yeah.
That's gone out. So, yeah, okay.
So Angie, Angie Houseley property. What was that?
Oh, yeah, we um, now this one's really embarrassing. We had, we had it as a hundred and twenty unit complex and it only has fifty-four units.
Oh.
The
Really?
The teammate that was with us uh, is no longer with us. All right.
That's a pretty big increase or decrease.
Yeah, that's, well, big decrease.
Yeah, but if we missed the number of units by half, I'm surprised it's not more.
Well, I, I'm glad that they looked at it closely.
JF missed the properties.
So are these, are these uh, adjustments made after the taxpayer came in or did you catch?
These are, these are Board of Equalization adjustments.
Okay.
So I believe all of these are, you know what, Commissioner, I'm not sure I shouldn't say. We may have caught some.
All right, either way, a JF is the partnership.
That, that was another one. They provided us with the information that we didn't have before.
Okay, and then the corporation of Presiding Mission.
Great. Oh, so that's the DI property out here off of uh, Twenty First Street. It is contaminated with asbestos and lead. And we didn't know that until they, they gave us a report that indicated
Is the old DNI? So that's contaminated?
Yes.
Oh.
Asbestos and lead.
In the building.
In the building. So it'd be considerable amount of mediation over picks that guy up.
Wow, okay.
But that's why we have it valued at five hundred thousand dollars instead of two point six.
Harv or Gage, let's give him five hundred thousand.
Let's give him five hundred. Let him tear it down now.
Yeah.
I'm dealing, yeah. Yeah, I think we'd give him five hundred.
Well, and you know, you just never know on this contamination.
Yeah.
I was involved with a boiler and the, it was a good sized boiler. And uh, the uh, it was about a sixty thousand dollar bid to take asbestos off the boiler. Well, uh, the guy that bid to replace with the boiler uh, his whole bid wasn't that much. When it all come down to it, it's like, how did he do that? Well, next thing you know, I looked out in that field behind his uh, place and there's that boiler sitting there.
Just dumped it.
With asbestos on it.
Oh. Where do you put it?
Out in the back field behind his business. Well, I thought, how can they do that? Well, then, when I got checking into it, there's a loophole there that says if you don't remove the asbestos. You know, you know, you just remove the boiler, you don't need to remove, remove the asbestos. It's still on the boiler.
So it's still on the boiler.
So I just picked up the boiler and hauled it away.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
Yeah, kind of unusual, huh?
Yeah.
Anyway. Well, John, this is good. This, this isn't as bad as reporters looks. This is just fine.
Now, it's
Little, little errors and mistakes.
Yeah.
But these are listed, are these listed on the consent items or are they listed on action items? How is it?
I haven't made that decision yet. I'm thinking, Ed, that's probably half the reason I'm here. See how you guys wanna, wanna deal with that since we're
Well, for all in agreement.
I don't see a reason it can't go on consent.
Consent.
Either.
Do, do you want them on consent? Right. You want them on consent each time or?
That'd be the chairman's decision.
Yeah, that's the agenda.
I really don't care. This is all pretty simple, but you know, I mean, I don't know if there's anything here to run from. Somebody wants to question, let them question it.
Now, sure, sure is the Board, Board of Equalizations doing their job.
Sure, that's exactly right. I'm okay. I'm okay with that.
Who are the members on that Board of Equalization? You got them off?
Yeah.
Oh, it's just us?
Commissioner Harvey, Commissioner Jenkins, Commissioner Bro.
But isn't there a Board of Adjustments that make the, the recommended?
No, you're, you're the actual Board of Equalization that approves.
Adjustment deals with the boundary lines, those types. So this is for taxes.
Yeah, everything that comes to use it.
What if Joe, Joe is taking something to a committee?
Tax review.
Tax review.
Yeah, but that's also just a suggestion.
You know, the Board of Equalization, I think we've only met one time since I've been here.
No.
We, we usually go yearly.
Do you?
Uh, and we present tax relief numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's one of those nine forty fives.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly. Okay.
Right. Uh, which brings me to the next thing in, in review. It also makes it look like we, we probably need to increase the number of times that we present for the BOE. So Yeah, we're looking at adding it to the, to the agenda.
Well, that's the way I look at it. Based on the
Quarter, quarterly. Something, but just, just an FYI.
Yeah, I'm with uh, both of these two. If it needs be, that's just belong. I have no issues with that.
All right.
Great.
Great.
April, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that to us.
John, thanks to you.
Always a pleasure.
Yeah, it is. We enjoy you coming in.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you guys.
See you later.
Well, Commissioners, we've got uh, about a forty minute break here.
Close to it.
Chief, can we just move up the others?
Well, I doubt the sheriff's here. You probably don't have Alan Hall, Cheryl Cox is here.
Probably don't have Cheryl or Alan here.
Yeah, no, you're right about that.
So, yeah, they just got the timing off a little here.
All right, we want to saunter for
motion to saunter for till two thirty.
All fair side.
Hi. Where's Saunter?
I got I got something to do.
There's no, there's no, uh, I got, yeah. You got your list?
Uh huh.
We, uh, we muted here?
Hold on.
I'll see you guys later.
All right. Welcome you back. We're sorry, uh, we have, uh, we're now done sauntering. So we're reengaging into the commission work session. This is the two thirty meeting that we have with Sheriff Harbonne. He's here. As well as all three commissioners, Commissioner Harvey, Commissioner Ford, myself, Commissioner Jenkins. So sheriff, time's yours. Oh, I'm wearing this mask because I've got a cold. I try not to get you sick.
That's the reason we're spread out here a little.
Yeah.
No, that's.
Eight years to order it, but just.
Okay, I was wondering.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to keep everybody healthy, bud.
No, I appreciate that. And as always, uh, everybody's time, especially in this room is, is, is very valuable and, and, uh, we just had a couple of turn of events that I wanted to keep you apprised on, and I hope you take uh, this sharing of, of information in, in the proper spirit. Uh, Chief Perry was out of town, uh, last week. And he came back and there was a letter under his door, uh, this morning, and I wanted to share it with you. And I highlighted, you're welcome to read the, the entire thing if you'd rather do that first or, or you can read it later, but there's a, a paragraph that's highlighted. Then there was a couple other things, um, that's, that I highlighted that I wanted to express. Uh, one thing that you guys, uh, know firsthand is, is you know, the sheriff's office, we invest in our employees first. They come first. Not the public, not the county. We invest in them first because we know if we take care of them, they'll take everything, care of most anything else. And in the second paragraph, I hi- highlighted, this is a letter again, it was left under the office of the Chief Perry. He says, I am happy here at the sheriff's office. For the most part, I've been treated well and the culture here is a good one. And so one thing I wanted to elaborate is, is we've done, as you guys know, lots of things to, to make it a place where people want to come work. And in a one point, pay is going to be an issue. So the, 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 the individual who admits that he is, uh, working on the enforcement side, he goes through a paragraph explaining the difference between in his situation to Ogden P D. Or he references that he's making twenty five dollars an hour, but someone that's three years can go to Ogden for twenty eight dollars an hour, which is less time and experience. And then he outlines this. So in this packet, I'll come back to the letter. This is a, a, a survey. It's a work that Chief Perry did. This has been sent to Park. And it's been sent to Sarah. And if you go to, uh, we, we checked this individual's numbers and I believe it's the fifth page. It's a comparison between currently us and Ogden. It looks just like this. And it, and, and, and it just says, it's underneath the graph, it says W C S O and then Ogden. And then the column that goes through a year for year, um, example. And so based on what he's saying, we found out that, yeah, he, this guy's also done his homework. And the average difference in pay is around four dollars and sixty three cents when you go year for year officer to officer. And this is just Ogden. We went through, uh, Roy's in there, uh, Clearfield City's in there, West Valley's in there. West Valley is just a, a, a different, a game that we're in.
So Sheriff, did, he put in here in his calculations though. At eight percent cost of living raise is coming this.
So this is to Ogden.
July first.
For Ogden, yes. So he's saying that he can get more now and then this is also coming.
Yeah.
Yes.
But in this, or in his, uh, uh, numbers that he's come here, about an eight dollar difference, an hour difference. So that includes.
He's, yes, he's taken the whole. So he's looking down the road like if this goes through with Ogden, now we're talking eight dollars. Yes.
And we're already aware of that, right?
Yes, yes. But the, 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 the concerning part is the rumors are out and it's, they've been confirmed that if you go to the fourth paragraph in the bottom sec, uh, bottom line that, uh, that does highlight is that I have already heard of a handful of people who are actively looking at employment elsewhere. So the consensus is that a buck or two or three is not their issue. They love the workplace. They love what's going on. They love our atmosphere, the environment. But when they illustrate an eight dollar, which, uh, in, in round numbers is around a sixteen to seventeen, eighteen thousand dollar pay difference. Uh, today, uh, I wrote on my note, there's an individual you guys probably know. Uh, do you guys remember Troy Aerosmith? Yeah.
Yeah.
He ran for sheriff when I ran. He was the Ogden guy.
Okay.
He left for a year or two and then he came back and he's working, uh, for us. And today, he's been with us for a year or so, maybe a little more. And he just turned in his two week notice.
Oh.
Twenty-five years of experience. Gone. He's leaving in two weeks.
So is he leaving the industry?
No, he's going to Ogden.
He's going to Ogden.
And this is true. He was in my office. In fact, he texted me before I had this, uh, after I planned this meeting and he said, can I meet with you today? And, and you know that text message and what it means. And I said.
Yeah.
So he comes over and he says, hey, I want you to be the first to know. He says, I'm, uh, gonna put in my two weeks notice today and I'm going. And the rumor was originally that he was going to Morgan, uh, for a bit of a, a slower pace. That was just rumor. But he said no, and he's going to Ogden and it's, it, it's, uh, I didn't ask, but it's at least, uh, five to seven dollars more an hour he's gonna get.
Fourteen thousand bucks.
Yeah, that's a pretty good amount.
It's not too tough to make that decision.
And my first comments to you, as you guys know, I hope that you take that this information in the, the proper spirit of why I'm sharing this. As you guys know, that we strive to make sure that everything's transparent. And this is just what we are experiencing at the office right now. It's real time. And this is, you guys should already have this or have already seen it. We've already sent it to Park. This is a few weeks old. But I wanted to bring it just as a reference for today.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I haven't seen it, but yeah.
But, but I know that Sarah and Scott Park have it. And this data ca- comes straight from the agencies that, uh, we worked with, uh, to accumulate this.
When we, uh, when we, uh, give you, uh, money a year ago and you raised everybody. Remember, when we give everybody two bucks flat out just to stop.
Everybody was doing cartwheels.
Oh, yeah. And, uh, we got a call from Ogden City and they give us a hard time. Roy gives us a hard time and said, boy, you know, many of you do that.
Remember, remember Dandoi?
Yeah, Dandoi.
Let's, let's put everybody together, have the same agency so we avoid all this.
And Dandoi was our biggest, uh.
Yeah, but then they do, uh, was it twenty-eight or thirty percent pay raise, uh, two months ago? Oh, and they're fully staffed. Roy is.
Roy is.
I was at their, I was invited to their banquet, uh, two Saturdays ago, Friday, two Fridays ago. And, uh, Blake Moore was their keynote speaker and, uh, they had basically were fully staffed and they haven't been that in years.
Really?
Yeah. So.
Oh gee.
And I, and, and I know you're hearing it from everybody. I get it, I get it. I just want you to share what we're going through. We don't, we got a great staff, um, our, complaints within the office have dropped fifty percent. We're humming along. Morale's high. When I was campaigning, I had a lot of people come up to me and said, you know what? You got my vote. He said, and I said, oh, that was easy. And they said, well, I said, I've talked to your deputies. They love what you're doing and they love the morale. So we're doing really good. And we know that sooner or later, we know it's not all about pay, but when the pay is this much.
Yeah.
It does become an issue. And so.
So answer this, why is Ogden, when I see our blue chart, it's nice and smooth and goes up like this, Ogden's is all over the place. Why is that?
That's the data that they gave us. It could be, it could be, uh, there's, uh, we were told that Ogden never had a pay raise for some time. And then, uh, we've never had a pay raise. Before I got here, I was heard that there was a, a, a cola, but not a pay raise for a number of years before two thousand and sixteen, when the tax increase went up. But, uh, some of the, a little bit off, uh, and, and the chart may show is we did a conscious effort to bring laterals on. And so a lot of the laterals were brought in. So what we did, uh, Commissioner Jenkins is I went to everybody in the agency, especially on the enforcement side. I said, what do you guys want? They said, we want pay and we want officers with experience. I go, tell me what that means. Because in my history, when you bring on a lateral, people don't like that because it's, it's not one of the guys, right? They said, we are sick of training. We are sick of training everybody and then leaving in a, in a year or two to go somewhere else. So they're constant training. So the guys that have experience, they're not out like they like to be. And what the public expects, someone with experience and time in doing police work, but they're training. And I says, well, what if I brought someone in? And I said, who here's got five years of experience in? Couple of them raised their hand. I said, who's got ten? Couple of guys raised their hand. I said, you guys that have ten years. Let's say you're getting paid thirty dollars an hour. If I bring in someone that's thirty one dollars an hour with the same amount of years, will you be upset? They said, no. I said, what if I brought him at thirty-two? You know what they said? They said, yes, we would be pissed. So they don't want new guys. They want laterals, but they don't want to pay. But in order to get some of these people, we gotta pay them a little bit more. So what we did, uh, starting with Matt Jensen, when I first came on, we did, uh, what we felt is a true apples to apples. So if you have a ten year guy and he has this, let's say he has ten items of training that he's completed and we're paying him thirty bucks an hour. But if we bring a ten year guy in, but he's got fifteen items of training, then we can justify paying him. And when we told them that, they're like, I can get behind that because they, they're worth more. On, as far as numbers, training, experience. But right now that gap is, is just becoming, you can go over with just three years of experience according to this number and get paid, uh, this much more than an hour than the guy that's got five years here. How do you compete with that? It's hard. And, and if you guys have some suggestions with us on our end, what we can do, please share because we're getting nervous. We're getting really nervous.
Well.
There is, there is, there is another section in here that, you know, maybe we could discuss at another time that, uh, but I don't know if now's the right time.
What is it?
It, it involves personnel. So I don't know if I could, we can talk, uh, public.
No, that said, so when we talk about personnel, that, uh,
Well, we don't have to go. We can go. So are you, they're going to talk about something you don't think should be made.
You talking about an individual?
Yes.
Oh, I think it ought to be a closed session.
All right.
Motion to go into closed session.
And I'll second that. All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Did you say aye?
I did.
So Paula, you're the one that's on the phone. Call right here.
You got an iPhone too.
You got iPhone.
Yeah, and there's iPhone. We're gonna, we are gonna go into a closed session here. Uh, Ron Gleason, you too. So we apologize, but, uh, uh, we're gonna do it so we can talk about some people. So we will be back if you want to hang around in fifteen or twenty minutes, but for right now, we're, we're gonna shut off. I'm in a closed session. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Okay, are we on four today?
Which, yeah, four o'clock.
Here?
Uh huh.
Okay, yeah, I'll be back.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me.
Yeah, thank you.
Alan Hall, Cheryl Cox should be in there, out there. Wow.
What are we talking about with the rodeo?
We don't know. I don't know. There she is, that's all favorite recipients, putting them all.
The working sessions guys.
That's right. That's what we do, Alan.
Nice to see you. How are you doing? Good, good to see you.
Cheryl, I got a cold.
He's got a cold.
That's right. That's why I'm wearing the mask. I don't want to get any of you guys sick. Summer cold. No, no, I got cold. That's right, way back. I'm trying to keep everybody here healthy.
Well, good. That's the reason we're kind of spread out. You get bathed.
Yeah, I did bathe.
Well, that's good.
All right, Cheryl, you're the hot shot here, so take this away.
Mr. Hall is the hot shot, but let me tell you.
No, no, that's how you look at it. We know.
Uh, you guys have just been friends way too long. Um, the reason we're here tonight is to give you an opportunity to join us in Ogden Pioneer Days. And Ellen is gonna go ahead and, and give you the pitch on it, but what we're trying to do is give you an opportunity on a sponsorship to be able to bring four hundred Weaver County government employees and their families to the rodeo. I don't know if you've, if the commission has ever had the opportunity or even been asked to participate in Ogden Pioneer Days.
I can't answer that. I know we, we were a guest of you, Alan, uh, three or four years ago. Three or four years ago.
Guest only.
Yeah, I guess.
Years ago though, the county have talked to Ogden City, but that's years ago.
Uh, I, that's just what I remember.
Yeah.
Now, we're here to make a big difference.
We're gonna make a big, what we're gonna do is invite you to collect thirty-two hundred dollars from some, some supporting business donors to cover the other half. The seats are sixteen dollars to cover the other half. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn the time over to Ellen because this really is his baby.
Yeah, let me, if you will, let me, uh, pass this to you. So you've got a copy of this.
Oh, yeah, give us something to write.
This is. Open it and write and then you'll nail me, so.
Special offer. Okay. Wow.
So before I go through it, let me just back up and say, I'm also going to the the cities and we were kind of saying, we want you to be a part of a big, a big celebration. This is not just Ogden, think about it, right? Uh, cause we have people come from all over the place. And for me, uh, as a chair, I really want to make sure we've got everybody involved in this celebration. That's the spirit of it, right? So what you'll see here in this little presentation is sort of what, uh, Cheryl described to you is what we're looking at, uh, you, literally you're gonna have four hundred or more people who would have a ticket. It's an eight dollar ticket. Our full price on the ticket is sixteen bucks. So for us to at least break even on that seat, we need to get another eight bucks a seat. Having done the math, it means you'd come up somehow with another thirty-two hundred dollars to cover those four hundred seats. Uh, and obviously we, we would hope you'd get involved in having a, you know, some, a float or some, representing the county in the parade. And, and clearly at the event, we want to make sure we're taking good seats and giving you dinner and then making sure we advertise everything that the, the county's doing. So that's, that's our, that's our pitch to you today and love to have you consider it, uh, and, uh, you know, participate with us this year.
You know, actually I like this. So you're asking for thirty-two hundred or sixty-four?
Well, the, the employee should pay bucks. We want them to have some skin in the gate, right?
I'm with you.
They're getting a half price ticket, but I need to cover the other eight bucks.
Okay.
That makes sense. That whether it comes out of your budget or you got some vendor that, you know, would step up and say, here's thirty-two hundred bucks, whatever.
Yeah.
And then at least we as Ogden Pioneer Days, uh, aren't whole. That's what I want.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
That makes sense.
We could go to, uh, we're not having our golf tournament this year and some of those places and, you know, we'd like to do that. But Gage, this is kind of, uh, this is an employee benefit.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. It is.
Look, I like this. We've never been really asked to formally be involved with this.
And typically the city hasn't really cared much to have us there. My experience.
If you think about it, the city does not run Ogden Pioneer Days.
Okay.
We do. We're, we're a nonprofit, right?
I didn't realize that the city didn't run the parade.
We run the parade.
Really?
Yeah.
Let me tell you what happened. Um, and I, I was just sharing this with Alan. Some years ago, when, uh, Mayor Godfrey was in, they made a decision that they were losing money on the rodeo and they were going to back out of the celebration completely. So we formed a foundation. There was Jim Smith, Craig Darden, Julie Snowball, me, Dave House. There was a bunch of people that got on that. And just said, we're, we put a bid in and we got it. And I think the thing that amazed me, there really was no information. Nobody had gathered any psychographics, demographics to find out who was coming in and supporting the rodeo with what they've set up now, having reserved seats. You can see that the cities around in Weaver County are the biggest supporters. Roy, Riverdale, North Ogden, Pleasant View, these guys. Sure. Oh, yeah, definitely. You've got cowboys that come from all over. So, um.
You got a lot of people who are not cowboys, just want to see a top five rodeo.
It's a family event, right?
Right.
I don't know if you guys have been recently, but I was blown right. It was, it was, it was well done. It reminded me a lot of the finals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, uh, our budget's a million bucks. Put this on. And about half of it comes from tickets. So you see, we're out raising money all the time to do it. And my objective as the chair was to make sure we always had some surplus. Uh, that we would have, uh, and, uh, as you know, we raised money about two million to refurbish the north grandstand. Took that old scaffolding, now put in a new one. I'm raising now another five million to do the south grandstand. We'll take down that cement structure and put in something that looks like the war. So the stadium will look nice going forward. We're on national television, Cowboy Channel every night. So this city's getting a lot of exposure, uh, which is good for the county, right?
You bet.
Yeah, absolutely.
They've got the best dog contractor in the nation that comes in.
Top rodeo, cowboys, cover. So that's a good thing. But my thinking was, you know, why don't we have the county involved in this? This is a, this is who you guys are. You're part of this community in a big, big way.
This could go through our human resource.
Yeah. Actually, I don't have an issue with this. It's up to you guys. I, I absolutely would like support.
Yeah, I think I need to sit down with Sarah and get her.
Right.
Take her to run it, but I don't see a issue.
Awesome.
One of the things you might want to do is, and we need to probably by, I would say, the middle of June have a decision because a lot of things have to happen that might.
Right.
But you might want to survey people, okay, to see who wants a ticket. And if you end up with more that would want it, uh, if we know soon enough, we'll open that up to.
So you said up to four hundred, but let's say that we had five hundred. Is that possible?
Uh, yes, it would be.
Okay. As long as you get your eight bucks.
We've got.
Once I get my eight bucks.
You know.
I'm a capitalist.
Yeah, no.
I appreciate that.
And it's not bad exposure to have you three on a float.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're in the parade.
We're in the parade.
Actually, we've been in the parade the last four years.
Have you?
Good.
Well, you guys were in the car one time, weren't you?
That's right.
And if you want to be in the car again, you just need to let me know right away.
Well, we've got another, we've got. We reached out and we did like Mac, we did the Mac set of mules.
We did mules.
We did the side by side.
So you guys are just like another, other vehicle show.
We did Teslas. We tried to mix it up.
Yeah, good.
This year, we're gonna take, uh, the Baku, the new company out there on the freeway.
That's a great idea.
We're gonna ride those scooters.
Cool.
With cowboy hats.
Are you really?
Yeah.
Well, I hope you survive.
Well, that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be, uh, uh, active transportation type of a.
We're trying to get people off the road. Stop using gas, though.
Yeah.
That's our message.
Yeah, no, it's terrific. It's terrific.
That's awesome.
Well, we, we, uh, invite you to consider, get back to us and.
We'll do that immediately.
You want Cheryl or Alan?
What, uh, you okay to, if I get it? Because I'll, I'll be working with the ticket people, so, um.
You want us to get back to you now or Cheryl?
Get back to me because I work with the ticket people.
Give me your number, Alan. I think I have.
Yeah, eight zero one.
So if you guys have any questions, call me.
Seven, six, four, five.
Hold on. Let me make sure it's the same one I've got.[1740.14]
Check it out. Eight oh one, six four five, seven six four five. That is.
Right here, it says Large Stallion Racehorse.
Really?
At gmail dot com. Is that still it?
Does he have a fun with me?
I think he is. Angel investor, venture capitalist, riverboat gambler.
That's the one. And I just got out of jail. Happy to be here.
There you go.
You fellows are the best. Thank you for your time.
Oh, yeah.
We're probably the only group that didn't show up wanting money.
Well, everybody wants
Well, this would be, uh, yeah, I think that'd be, I think this would be another nice thing for us to
I think this is an investment into
You know, and I, you know, Weaver County, as a county, we also, though, uh, at no cost, provide all those services for the Queen competition.
Yes, you do.
Do that for the, the, not just the Miss Rodeo Ogden, but the Miss Rodeo Utah.
You take care of us out there. And I don't know if we recognize that.
Many hours sitting in those seats during that competition.
Yeah, you especially, Cheryl. I remember that. So we still participate, and that comes out of the county. That comes, that's represented in our budget. We see that. This will be, this will be good.
Okay.
All right. Is there any, uh, is there any possibility for just a few tickets for the twenty-fourth?
Uh, yeah, well, if you'll let me know right away, yes. Well, the twenty-fourth, we're not doing it twenty-fourth. That'd be the twenty-fifth.
Uh, that's, I was gonna say, or is it twenty-fifth? But the last night, the only reason is, uh, is that there are people who call us, who are vendors for us. Yeah. Calls and say, "Do you guys have anything for the last night of the rodeo?" We say, "Gosh," you know, it's
Yeah.
We kind of turn, we turn a lot away.
Well, if you can get us like a ticket budget, you know, like you want so many seats, this is the time to pull that trigger.
Well, I think we, you know, we've talked about, uh, in the past, buying some seats above the chutes.
Mm-hmm.
And having those so we could use them for vendors and maybe some of our key
Take care of people.
Take care of people.
You know how that
Like Ogden's.
No, I do, and, and
God for you to do that.
We, we, uh, we are in the process right now, figuring out, you know, sponsors, where they sit, donors, where they all gonna be. So what we need now is to know what you think that number of seats would be and what night. So, Gage, if you could maybe figure that out with your team, send that, send that to me.
Will do.
Got it.
I mean
What do you think of that, Art? I mean
No, I think it would be a, a nice gesture. I've had vendors actually say to me, "Art, you guys, how many seats do you get for the Pioneer Days?" We said, "We get none." He said, "Well, I always wanted to sit above those bucking chutes."
You know, and my favorite is the side chute seats.
Me too.
Where, those ones over there?
The side box.
I'm over, I like, they're better.
I like the north side.
Cause you're right there.
Well, you know, where we, you sat, uh, you can see them coming out, because if you're really over the chute, you miss a lot of action.
So, the north side? I mean, yeah, I know that.
I like the north side.
Well, actually, the better seats are the box seats along the north in the middle.
Yeah.
They really are great.
Yeah.
That would be my, that'd be my preference, actually.
Yeah, let, let us know. I'm here to accommodate you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And if you can't get ahold of Alan, you've got my phone. I think you've got my phone number, too. Okay.
Great.
Thank you, thank you, fellas.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, doing good.
Have a lovely afternoon.
Thinking about Lavar Christianson today. I don't know why.
Who?
Lavar Christianson.
Lavar?
Oh, my God.
I'll tell you what, one of the greatest days of my life, um, was sitting down there, and, and you and Lavar got into a debate, and it was over.
I wanted to, we had more than one.
Oh, my gosh, I'm just going, go, go
Boy, you're talking about a hard head. Lavar, he's like a dog on a bone. You can't get him off something.
He, I can remember, there was a whole bunch of us that got in there and said, "Yeah, Lavar, you really ought to run for the Congress." He should run for Congress, so he'd get out of the legislature, knowing that he would never make it, so.
Well, he ran one time.
Yeah.
Got kicked.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. But he was the most different, yeah, he's one guy that I never saw
I just remember all the books that he had underneath his desk, like stacks of law books and all.[1720.11]